We're going to call the meeting to order and everyone could rise for the pledge and also stay up for a short memorial. Pledge of limitations. Moment of silence, please, for our first responders, our troops deployed. And we also lost an SRPD member, Wolfie, Gene Wolfe. And he was with SRPD for 29 years and before it was SRPD. And also with Rose for a long time. Thank you. John, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
John Woods from Rose Fire Company is the new fire chief.
How y'all doing?
How you doing?
I just wanted to introduce myself to everybody. I'm the new fire chief up the street, delivering the call report for January. But I thought I'd throw a couple of things in there as well. I don't think many people know me. Moved up here from Southern Maryland about 19 years ago. I live in the Summers Glen area. Nice out there. I grew up in the area where we had the back of the fields. Came up here and I got cornfields and horse farms. So it's a great place. Three of my daughters went to school up here. Everybody finished up at college. Two of my daughters are back. One's in Alexandria, Virginia, as a lawyer. So the education system here is excellent. And I appreciate that. But anyway, it was the best decision I could have made outside of marrying my wife. I don't know if she's listening, so I hadn't seen that. But anyway, I want to go over a couple of things. Myself, I've got 45 years of time in the fire service. Thirty-eight as a career firefighter, either in Prince George's County, Maryland, Arlington, Virginia, or York Area United Fire Rescue was my last go-around for about 12 years. Got a couple of goals for this year. Now, let me back up for a second. A lot of times when you see the fire department show up here, people think we just have our hands out, but want something from you. I want to be a part of this. So I plan on being here monthly, or I'll have somebody here on a monthly basis to give a report. I don't want you to think that we're begging every time we show up and guys get sour on us showing up. So that's not the plan. Anyway. My goal for the year, training and operational readiness of my volunteers. Right now, I've got 17 very active, very qualified young volunteer firefighters. I hope they add to this. We have 30 responders, but like I said, 17 are making the majority of the calls. By the end of the year, I want to put together a five-year plan for the fire service. I don't plan on doing this in five years. I'm 61 years old. I think that they're going to get tired of me real quick. So we're going to put a plan in place, a succession plan, so the next person that steps up is ready to go to work. Not trying to feel their way around. We're going to construct a plan for recruitment of new members and a retention plan for the current ones. It's going to take a little bit of work. I have a lot of friends and quite a few of them in Harrisburg right now that are going to help us out with this. Update our operational procedures so that when we show up, we don't look like the comedy guys. I was going to say Keystone Cops, but I don't want to get beat up. We show up, we know what we're doing. We're going to look good doing it. And hopefully, you'll be happy with the performance of your volunteers. And the last thing I got on that one is we're going to initiate a community smoke detector program. This isn't a knee-jerk reaction from the fire and dorky other native that three people perished. This is more about something that I've been doing for 30-some years in the fire department. I believe in them. Been to plenty of fires where they have been active, working fires, a lot of chaos and everything, but the people made it out because of early warning, early detection. They were able to get out. Somebody gets out of a house on their own, it lessens the risk of danger for my firefighters. Even though we're going to go inside and put a fire out, even though we're going to crawl down a dark, smoky, hot hallway, makes it easier when we're not trying to search for somebody. We put the fire out and the emergency is over fairly quick. So smoke detectors mean a lot on both ends, for my guys and for y'all. So we're going to put something together. I already have somebody that's going to determine 30 detectors. And I'm going to get some more, hopefully, from Home Depot. But that's on the plan. My monthly stats, for borough calls for January, we had 11 calls. We had a total of 23 calls in the first two areas. So outside of a borough, but our first unit, we had 23. And a total with mutually, we had 48 calls. The man-hours for that was 142. Our in-station training man-hours for January is 37 amongst 12 personnel. So we're getting out there and we're training. What this doesn't include, what you don't see in the stats, is the amount of hours that are spent at business meetings, fire prevention details, apparatus maintenance details, station maintenance, and outside training make us a little bit better. Anyway, with that being said, if anybody has any spare time, would you like to come up and help? Not just an operational time for us. We also, we need people to give us time when it comes to chicken barbecues or any fundraisers that we have. We'd greatly appreciate seeing some help. Also, the doors are always open. In the summertime, I plan on the paid doors being open because I want you to know we're open for business. So stop in anytime and see us. And if something doesn't look right, point it out to me. If something looks good, tell me about it and I'll pass it down. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call. Thank you all very much.
John, I did have one quick follow-up.
Yes, sir.
You said about meeting and details, and 142 hours in calls, 37 in training. Do you have anything on how many hours in meetings and details and apparatus?
We do. I don't have that information right now. My recording secretary takes care of the non-emergency hours. And I just didn't get to her to get this. Everything I have normally and what I pass to y'all will be emergency operation hours or training hours. But I'll get that for you.
I was just curious, because we always talk, and the mayor and I both try to point out the fact that your fire department saves us tax dollars to the tune of a million dollars a year, something in that neighborhood. So I was just kind of trying to see what we saved you.
We had to hire nine firefighters, which would be free per shift, plus an administrator. We'd be looking at just a little over a million dollars after benefits. It's a hefty amount. These guys do a good job keeping us going right now. So we appreciate y'all's support.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, sir.
And just so you know, your wife will know what you said about her, because this is recorded.
Just like a gram of wine. Thank you all.
Have a comment for the board?
I just have something real quick. I got the pricing stat from Andrew to replace the signs at the park with the rest of the Sesko Centennial money. We have enough money to do two signs. We can work on the design. They'll match all of the other new signage in town. And then in both areas, for the area at the park and up the hill, we should have enough money to do like a decorative garden around both. And then the Lions Club has something to present to you after that. We're going to hopefully tie it all together. So I just wanted to give a status update. My goal for March is to go with Andrew, hopefully get everything ordered. And then we can go from there.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Will we have an opportunity to see the design before it's finalized?
Yep.
It's going to match the Trail Town signs pretty much, right?
Yeah, and I mean, I thought we would incorporate the Sesko Centennial.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Crystal Benzo and I live on 27 South Broad Street. I actually came here for a few reasons. One, I wanted to know what you guys were doing as far as snow. I know that the snow hasn't really been, the past couple of years have been really late. But this past year, it's been, this last snow, it was really horrific. And especially if you have a driveway and cars that are on alleyways. Now, I understand main roads come first, but the alleyway, and I have pictures to prove it, was not really touched. It was solid ice. Now, from a community person that lives in the neighborhood and everything like that, this is a kind of a concern because you have people that walk their dogs. You can't put rock salts or anything like that because that hurts the cause of the animals. So I don't know if it's maybe people that aren't doing their job. And I don't want to put anybody saying, oh, they're doing their job awfully. But I do know that the younger generation, including myself, but I haven't raised that way, don't do a really good job. So I'm bringing this up as a concern as an individual. Now whether other people have...
What alley?
I'm on South Broad Street and I think, I can't remember, but I think it's...
It's the one behind your house there? That alley? Which side of Broad Street?
So it's South Broad Street and I am actually, my alley, my driveway, so it's 27 South Broad Street, the Burke House, and then there's an alleyway. And our driveway is in the alleyway. That it just...
That makes it difficult for you to...
Yes. I mean, I have a Honda Civic, I have a Nissan Maximum. You know, those vehicles aren't, you know, they can't do it. To where we now have to rely on, you know, we don't, how we think of it is we don't want to put our cars in the street so that, one, it gets hit by something, or, two, that the road can be cleared properly. You know what I mean? I'm, this is more a safety, but also consideration for the community. You know, I, now, I talked to my neighbor across the street. She allows us to, you know, park over there, but she's an elderly woman. You know, we go over and we shovel her out and everything else like that. You know, that's what neighbors should do. But what happens when she passes on and she moves away? Like, you know, and the neighbors aren't going to allow us to do that. So that's why I'm bringing this up. One, because we are going to have something tomorrow. We don't know how much we're having tomorrow, but it's just something to think about. You know? My next thing that I kind of wanted to address was the trash. I'm sorry, but I can understand if you're taking away bulk, you're taking away two, you're taking away one day, but you're increasing the price for one day. Now, this last snow, it put us back two weeks. I just don't, I'm sorry, from a business aspect, that just does not make sense to me. For you're going to take away but increase the price. That just, that just doesn't make sense.
I think that's a little bit of a misnomer. We didn't take away and increase the price. We rebid the contract. And the contract was bid with two days or with one day. And the two days was $700 and some dollars more a year, which we found to be cost prohibitive. So the council decided to go with one day a year, which other municipalities have had already done and some of them have done recently. So it's not that you're getting, it's a totally different contract. It's a brand-new contract.
I mean, from where I'm, from what I'm gathering and from how other people, I guess because we're so used to that two days, you know, it does make a big difference. Because then it's like, okay, well, what if we have a party? Especially, you know, warmer season is coming. People are going to be want to be outside and have parties and everything like that. But now we have to be like, oh, wait, we've got to be careful in the trash. Like, what are we going to get? Like, that puts a big damper on us. I mean, I feel like, and I mean, the way prices have gone up, I wouldn't mind paying, I don't mind paying that extra, but as long as I'm getting my money's worth as two days of trash, if that makes sense.
Well, I think, Andrew, you probably have the answer to this on the contract. That's a five-year contract, correct?
And it goes up every year. So we're protecting you from that type of a price increase and bringing your costs down over the next five years. Because one is not going to be what it is now five years from now.
No, I get it. I understand with the price of the increase and, you know...
And everybody got the larger totes, which are, what, 69 gallons?
But in, like, in my household, all right, I have a household of six. By Wednesday, from pickup from Friday, by Wednesday, my trash is overflowing.
Correct me if I'm wrong. They have the ability to pay double. Am I correct? If that doesn't work for you, you can get more totes, but you're going to have to pay for it.
We would have to pay for an additional trash can.
Yes, that's correct.
Keep in mind, your recycling is unlimited. So all the red silo cups from the party can go into the recycling. They don't have to go into the trash.
Well, yeah, I understand that. I mean, plastic, glass, paper.
Yeah, and if you smash cans, you know, that's a lot of places are dealing with.
Well, I understand that. I'm not saying I put my recycling within my trash. I'm talking about this is trash. I have kids, diapers, that sort of thing that cannot go in recycling. I mean, but then I was also thinking, well, why can't we burn? There's an ordinance for burning trash.
There's an ordinance. You can't, there's a burn ban ordinance.
And then that's another, you know...
Because, I mean, I know approximately where you live. People can't do it. They don't tend to do it properly. They'll do it anytime. I've had the problem with my street where I'm 10-foot...
Mr. Mayor, no, we're not discussing the entire ordinance. You can't burn in New Freedom. It's just, that's the law.
Okay. And then my next thing is, is why are we building and packing people into New Freedom like a can of sardines?
The, are you just talking specifically about Franklin Square?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that was a beautiful place that you could hike and everything else like that. But now we're being packed in like a bunch of rack pads to where if we, and I'm not saying it's happening now, but eventually, because I'm not a native from here. I'm originally from a small town in New Jersey. And I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. And I want you to make very clear of this. It's going to be built up because of money, because it's all about revenue. Houses make more than businesses. But here's the thing. A lot of the stuff that you're going to build is going to be vacant. It's, I'm seeing it in Jersey, in my hometown, back home in New Jersey. Now, I reside here for roughly about 15 years, and I call this my home. But back home where I'm from, that's a problem. And it's because a lot of people are not realizing you're going to get drugs in here, which is going to put more on the police department. You're going to have more fires, which is going to put more, and more EMS calls, that's going to put more on the fire department. I'm a proud American, and this is a concern for myself.
I understand what you're saying. Franklin Square was rezoned prior to this seating of this council. And the rezoning allowed the multifamily units. We've since had another developer come in who wanted to put multifamily units in, and that didn't make it even past the planning stage. So we do have some control as long as we meet the zoning. So we don't have to allow larger developments in places where there's, for instance, a half-acre lot restriction. But there will be other building in town, not in town per se, but around the town, because those lots are zoned for half-acre. So other developers will be allowed to build those, and that's a zoning issue. We only follow the zoning.
Okay, well, I'll look into more of that because you're definitely going to be saving a lot more.
Okay.
And it's only because I don't want what's going on in my small town with the crime, the drugs, and the complete, you know, just demolition of, you know, a society as a whole, because that's what it seems like we're coming to. I want to preserve and keep what we have. I like the small town. I'd rather live in the small town as opposed to a city in a suburb. Because I lived in all areas, and I love this. But when things start getting a little out of hand and I have to voice it, then you're going to see a lot more of me.
You're always welcome. And I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree with you almost in entirety. I'm not sure about the snow, remember what I...
Well, I mean, the snow, especially our alleyway, there's some trees that are in the way to where it makes it a sheet of ice. And Mr. Bob, he's the blacksmith that's behind us. He has these beautiful icicles that we just, it's just, it's just an awe that, you know, we see them. I mean, that's what, living here has really not only changed me as a person, but it also has changed me as like a family, as, you know, what I want and I expect from my family that I'm raising. So in a way, you know, like my son, he's like, well, where are you going? And I said, council meeting. Well, why are you going there? And I'm like, there's problems that I see that I need to address or I need to voice my opinion so that we can fix them. I'm like, that's how it's done in society. It's not, you know, well, you're wrong, this is how it's supposed to be. No, we need to debate this, we need to figure this out, and we need to figure out what's best for everybody, not just one side.
I agree.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just a small point, back to the trash. What was communicated to us was we got no bids on the two-day.
Sorry. Yes, we did. I didn't name and...
I'm sorry, John King. What I got, it's not big yet, but what I got was that there was, they came back no bid on the two days. I'm happy with one day. I'd like, I'd be rolling trash. We don't have a lot of trash.
Now, I think the one contractor bid no bid the two-day, and the other contractor was, I believe, what was it, $800 a year more?
I know doubt it was more, it just worked fine for me, but just as a...
There was a second, there was a bid for two days. But it got to be, we thought it was pretty expensive just to get the second day, so we didn't go for it. The other contractor didn't bid the second day.
That's all I thought, that's fine.
Patty Worsbacher from the Lions, to go along with what Jenny said. The Lions want to put a memorial bench either at the playground for Lion Topps office she passed away. We're going to provide the bench and stuff. We need to know, are there any restrictions to what type of bench? We're looking at those recycled, the trucks benches, if that's okay? And would you need plans or anything? And we want to tie it in with Jenny's memorial garden, if that's okay?
I think we just need to look at location.
Yeah.
Yeah. Location would be the only thing. And I know what you mean by the trucks benches, it has the concrete, and then the trucks cross pieces. That would be great.
And then the other thing is, would you guys be installing it? Because it's probably got to be put in cement and stuff, because I know Dennis McAvoy knows about all that. So would the borough be putting it in, doing all that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Thank you. Any else? Thank you. Approval of minutes for the meeting held January 2nd and January 8th.
Are we doing both together?
No, we'll do January 2nd first.
Motion to approve January 2nd, 2024, council meeting minutes.
Second. Comments on January 2nd? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. My vote is aye. Motion for January 8th?
Aye.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions?
Just under approval of minutes. I've requested in the past that when suggestions or corrections happened, that they be included here, instead of just provided suggested corrections, because nobody knows when they come back here, what it was. This one was to include the 2024 budget meeting dates from me and then Andy corrected the statement made to Bernadette. So just so that we have, because it's taking action on something. And then over on the manager's administrative report for the $1.4 million for the sewer, if we could just add in, that's for phase one, because it's a multi-phase, so we know where that $1.4 million is going. It goes for phase one only, right? That's what this is for?
No, there is no phase two at this point. Phase one is being paid for by the current members. If there is a phase two, it'll be paid for by additional DUs purchased by the other municipalities.
When, literature that I've received, it showed a phase two and how it would look and things like that. So I mean, it could be one, but can we just specify it's for phase one?
Well, actually, if there were money left over, it could be a phase two, but I don't think there would be, it's all allocated. Are we calling it phase one and phase two at this point?
Our paperwork has said.
Phase one, irritation improvements.
So I guess then we can say that.
Yeah, that was it for that.
Anyone else? I have one thing. The request for clarification on what documentation is desired. We had said, in our previous minutes in December, we had said that she, that Bernadette or Ms. Reinberg was directed, and she really wasn't directed. I think that was probably the wrong word to use, but I would like the words added. President Bobby reminded her, there is no need for monitoring. Not monitoring has not been requested by the borough, and it's her choice to proceed, which we told her during this meeting in January. So if those words could be added, I think it's important. Can revise your motion to include Eric's changes and my changes?
I'll agree to the changes for the motion.
I'll agree in a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. My vote is aye. Okay, the treasurers report, January 2024. I didn't obtain a motion to accept pending audit.
Aye.
Second.
Questions?
I did receive a couple of questions earlier today. There was a question on page four about all our enterprises. All of that, those are listed there for permits. They completed quite a few residential projects. They are a HVAC plumbing company, so they completed a couple of projects within the borough. So that's why there's different receipt numbers for those transactions. There was a question regarding the recreation fee. That was from the solar energy site off Pleasant Avenue. The subdivision and land development ordinance requires that... The subdivision and land development ordinance requires that there be a fee in lieu of any land dedication for recreational purposes. So, I'm sorry, that was page nine. So, just as if their development of residential lots or subdivision, it's $2,000 per lot. That money goes into a separate account, and it's used for improvements at the recreation facilities, other parks.
Is there a difference in rec fees for a business as opposed to a house?
It's per lot.
Per lot, okay.
Yeah. Page 12, there's a question on auditory spending of $300. That relates to a deposit cleaning. It should be considered a cleaning deposit, security deposit. There's a question about the $339.50 for the Lions room. That's just a rental of the room and the corresponding deposit. On page 22, there was a question about the cost of the truck. That is, the complete cost of the truck, vehicle that was purchased. And then there was a question about cleaning of the community center. The previous individual that was cleaning decided to quit. We did look at a couple of options and ended up bringing on a new cleaning individual who's now cleaning the community center and the office here. So, we were able to combine services and actually save some money per month on those two combined. So, that's why there is nothing listed for that month, but they started, I believe, two weeks ago and have been cleaning at the center and at the office.
How many times a week?
Where?
At the community center.
So, they're cleaning one thorough cleaning once a week, and then coming in and doing some spot cleaning and just making sure everything is touched up.
Can I ask you what day they're doing their thorough cleaning?
Thursday.
Thursday. So, after the weekend is when we usually have a problem.
Right. Well, that's why we are inspecting the facility after rental. So, if there are issues, then we will bring her in, hold the security deposit, and pay that allocation out. But the spot clean is just to make sure that there are no issues.
Is this a flat rate or per hour for the community center?
It is a per cleaning, so it's a flat rate.
And what does that cost per cleaning?
The full cleaning is $250, as we were paying in the past.
That's for the, on Thursday, the one thorough cleaning, $250?
Yes.
And then the spot cleaning, how much are that?
That cleaning is based on hourly. It's pretty much coming in at about an hour, an hour and a half, and it's, I believe it's been somewhere between $60 and $70.
Per hour?
Per, yes.
So, $60 to $70 per hour for spot cleaning that lasts one to 1.5 hours.
Yep.
And do we know how many times she's going to be coming in for spot cleaning generally?
Just once.
One good cleaning, just so, so maybe twice a week?
Right. It's one full cleaning and one spot.
One spot, so.
How do we know if somebody does not get their deposit back? Where does that reflect on this?
Well, you'll, it's already been booked as income, so we're just holding it and not returning. The way we would normally indicate it was in the memo line, indicate that, say they brought their key file back, that return of file, but holding security or something on those lots.
Okay. So, we can't tell from this that our name had to pay for a cleaning or a security deposit?
Correct. Because when it's booked as revenue, it's just a security deposit.
And when did the new cleaner start?
Two weeks. They already have.
What, when? So, two weeks ago?
I believe it was about two weeks.
When you said lot?
I'm sorry?
You said something about fee per lot?
Yes.
When you have a denser unit and their apartments, is that one lot?
Depends on how it's laid out in, on the zoning now.
You're talking about the recreation fee?
Yes.
That was paid per dwelling unit or lot. It's worded that way.
Okay.
If it's apartments, it's paid by the number of apartments.
Okay.
Yeah.
I suspected that. So, apartment might only have one land lot, but there might be six units.
Yeah.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. My vote is aye. Sign regulation for Chapter 225 zoning.
So, the update there is the local government advisory committee did review the draft ordinance. They did recommend approval of that ordinance to Moore County Planning Commission. Moore County Planning Commission actually denied and recommended non-approval. They provided some additional language that we would suggest be added based on some recent court cases. So, we are internally updating that, and we'll provide updated drafts and in process get that over to Moore County Planning Commission for their second review. It's just updating a little bit of language.
Does this need to be done before the zoning here for even toll?
No.
Okay. There's no way it could be? Yeah, I know. There's no way to. Stormwater channel?
DEP still has the permit listed as pending as of earlier this afternoon. If you ask DEP, they'll say they have 90 days, but it's been taken longer than that.
Does that have to be reapplied or anything after 90 days, or they can do what they want?
Pretty much.
I got our minutes. Under due business, we have the multipurpose community facilities program. That's Steve Grant.
Yeah. So, hopefully everybody got a chance to review some of the guidelines. This was just a brief introduction at last month's meeting, where we looked at the possibility of evaluating the community center property, as well as maybe combining some different services in that building. So, really, there is no set. There has been no discussion as far as what potential can be here. I think, and if you look through the eligible project costs, that there are quite a few eligible costs that relate to pre-project development, and I think that's where we would stand. Obviously, though we have an issue with the community center and upkeep and future maintenance concerns, so I think it would be a benefit to utilize this program to really evaluate those services and possibly combine the recreational needs of the community, senior center needs, the fire and EMS needs, and look at housing that possibly in one building, rather than multi-b buildings that are holding it.
You envision this being attached to Rose?
I did have a conversation with Rose that they would be willing to discuss it. But again, trying to keep everything under one roof, almost set it up like a condo type of agreement. Again, this is all, this is all talk at this point, but I think this program has the benefit that there's no match, and we have the ability to obtain funding to really evaluate what the best solution long-term would be for the building and combining services.
So, is the next step to make a motion to obtain the funding to do the evaluation?
Well, I think the next step would be allowing our office the ability to move forward with submitting the grant application to bring on consultant or someone to complete that feasibility study and evaluate the need and how we can move forward.
More motion about it?
This is for Marge Woodfell, right?
No.
It's for the community center? Oh, community center. I would entertain a motion to allow the borough office to pursue funding for evaluation of the community center.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No, that's, that would almost, I'm sorry. That would give us, just help us to get money. We could actually build that instead of...
Build, you could renovate. I think, I think what Andy's trying to say is the first step is to, or what he did say, actually, is the first step is to evaluate the community center, to see, for instance, we know we have an HVAC problem. Is it going to be worth it to put the money into it to fix that? Or are we putting money into something that is not going to last long-term?
Well, I just think that you're looking, it was talked about last month, replacing the community center with, you know, the rent from $250,000 to $2 million in here, and I don't think you can even tear down that community center for under $2 million. So, I don't know where the rest of it would come to be built back up. You don't even know what it needs, and to jump into this, we know, I think, just in the time I've been here, the drivers for the money pit that it's called would be the HVAC and possibly mold remediation. I've seen, I've seen them there. Is there issue with mold and rooms and so forth? But at least the HVAC. How come we're not going out for three bids? It doesn't cost any money to have somebody come in to, you know, give you an estimate on what the needs are there? And I believe barely 13 years ago, 1.5 million or more was put into that community center. So, I don't know the need. I'm just kind of confused by this. I think that we need something like, you know, outside of an engineer that's just going to say this, get people in the field to come out, to come in, to look at the community center and say, "Okay, I see this HVAC. This is maybe what it needs," or whatever. This is the cost of it.
Everything you talk about is listed, and as I indicated, pre-development project cost, architectural design, engineering design, work related to environmental permitting, permitting, planning, data gathering, feasibility study, community engagement.
That's exactly what we're talking about. Where, what this, what this would do, this portion of the grant that we would be, or it would be applying for, would be to evaluate the community center, to see, is it worth putting money into it, which would still be covered by this grant? Or is it worth it to take it down and build something that would last long-term? That's exactly what, what you said is exactly what getting this grant would do. It would provide all of that information so we can make an informed opinion decision to do that.
How much is it to put in this grant? Is there a fee?
If there would be a fee, it would be to Commonwealth Financing Authority. It's usually only $100, but I don't believe that I saw that indicated anywhere.
And the grant would be for how much?
Quite costly.
Is there how much listed in here?
Between $250,000 and $2 million. But I also see per capita on the back here. They have a definition for capita. New Freedom has the highest per capita income in, I think, nearly all the burrows, definitely in our area. So, I wouldn't see us getting the high end of the money. That's going to go to...
Well, that, that same information was required in the money that we just received through the Commonwealth Financing Authority.
The $1.14?
The $1.14 million. So, clearly, that didn't impact too much.
I mean, the motion on the table is only to apply for the money to do the evaluation. If we get the money to do the evaluation, then we will proceed with an evaluation to see where we were with the building and whether or not it made sense to move, to move forward. Each, each step of the way, council would approve whatever the plan did. So, probably number one on the list would be the HVAC. Well, yeah. That's something that we're all concerned about, right?
Yeah, but as part of the study, they'll decide that.
Why do they have to do a study when we know we need a new HVAC? Well, I mean, I, we know we need a new HVAC, but it's kind of like you have a car. You know, what Erica was referring to, that we put over a million dollars into the community center, that's like we put a new transmission in the car. But if it's not worth it, if it's rusted through and the floorboards are falling apart, then we can't really justify putting more money into an HVAC system. Now, if they come in and they say, "Yes, you can salvage this. It would need this, 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 and this," then we've got something that we could say, "Well, let's apply for the grant and see if we could get the money to complete those four items that the evaluation said we needed to do." That's where we are right now. For all the free money you get? Is my thought.
And it talks about the proportion of the capital pledged by the applicant to finance proposed community facility project.
But there is no matching required.
Reading application evaluation, proportion of the capital pledged by the applicant. Talks about climate positive mitigation, climate change risks. PBDA at sole discretion can approve any extension requests. It all has to be completed before December 31st of 26.
Are we agreeing somewhere with this, or...
And wasn't the deadline April? Is that what was said?
I think it's to apply, yes.
To apply.
That's why we're asking for a motion to apply.
And how much money are we going to be out by applying for this?
I understood the amount was $100.
Are we positive on that?
No, it might be zero.
There's, under application procedure, there's no fees listed.
But traditionally, if there is a fee, it would be in the $100.
So, from last month, talked about completely replacing the community center. This month, you're talking about looking at improvements to the building, not necessarily tearing it down.
The question on the table is to allow the borough office to proceed with requesting funding to do an evaluation of the building, so we know exactly what the building will need and what the longevity of those improvements would add to the building. They may come back and say, "All you need to do is replace the HVAC system and the building is sound." They may come back... They may come back and say, it's going to cost you 3.7 million dollars to do the building, which would be then, we would have to, that, that would be the, the contribution. You're only going to get 2 million dollars plus from a grant, and you would have to come up with another million dollars to do the building. So right now, we're just in a state where we're looking at it to evaluate, to see if it makes sense to continue with the building.
Who is they?
Who they what?
You say they tell us, it just needs this...
Whoever does the evaluation, I would imagine it would be the engineers that would go in and take a look at it, make sure things are sound.
Well, that's, that's where I'm kind of talking about. Why aren't we looking at the people in the field that do HVAC instead of just the engineer? Why aren't we, you know?
Well, because it's, if you want this, the mon, the free money, you have to go and do the evaluation. You can't just go to, to them and apply for a grant for an HVAC system. The HVAC system may be free to New Freedom Borough. There may be no cost to the taxpayers if we proceed and do the evaluation and get the grant money to do it.
We don't do this in the...
So we're trying to save, save a couple million dollars in HVAC and any kind of remediation that needs to go on in, in the community center. That's why we're applying for the grant.
Yeah, if we call some HVAC guy, then we're still footing the entire bill for that replacement.
Yeah.
Upgrade, whatever.
But you know, if you want to go forward with something like this...
I'm not, I'm not following.
I guess it's just...
Could this include the new generator, or is that already going?
I had a grant for that.
Oh, you did get a grant for that?
We made application.
Right.
I'm sorry?
We made application.
Okay, but we haven't got, the grant is here.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to proceed with applying for funding to do an evaluation of the community center. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay, consider approval of the volunteer service credit roster for 2023. The points on this were calculated using the program that the Borough provided to Rose Fire and...
I'll make a motion that we approve the volunteer, volunteer service credit roster for 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing Rose Fire Company Services and participation at all events. As you may recall, we decided to do this as opposed to approving each event, so this gives them blanket authority for people to come to Rose and say, we need service. I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing Rose Fire Company Services for participation at all events.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Solicitor's report?
Aye, I have it.
Manager's report?
Everybody has a copy of the report for the month of January. Have anything additional unless there's any questions?
Did you ever hear any, I guess I would say, positive feedback, so far as a thank you from Shrewsbury Borough about this million-plus dollars for the treatment plant? Silence?
Nothing specific, other than I believe they recognized that...
It's more of a $1,000.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I think these additional grants should be mentioned for people who watch the video at home.
The additional grant for the sewage, or for?
No, the 40,000 for the playground upgrades at Joan Davis.
Oh, okay.
Sure. Yeah, under York County's Marcella Shale Legacy Program, we received an additional 40,000 dollars to upgrade the playground structures at Joan Davis Community Park. So we'll look to purchase that equipment via Co-Stars and install it and get the, get the equipment upgraded. So that was a, a nice addition to the, the 1.1 million that we received back in December. And based on the Borough's recycling performance for the calendar year of 2022, we received 3,389 dollars from Department of Borrow and Protection.
How many, if you can off the top of your head, how many grants do we currently have in the pipeline between 1.1 and the 40,000, even the one that we just talked about? It seems like we have about five or six, the generator?
Yeah, and we're still tying up the one for the crosswalks that came from York County Economic Alliance.
Would, this is just, just a thought, I'm not saying to do it, but would it be a lot of extra work or anything to kind of put like a status board on the manager's report? Because it's getting to be quite a few grants, which is really good. But just to say like, this is still going, ongoing, this is closed, you know, we expect to hear something back within a month?
Yeah.
Just, just kind of, because that's, that's a lot going on, which is, again, really good. But this way, we just to kind of track that.
Sure.
Well, just so, just so everybody knows, I mean, we save, you know, in, in excess of a million, probably closer to 2 million dollars of taxpayer money by applying for grants. And these grants, in general, cost about a hundred bucks. Some of them have matching requirements, some don't. The ones that have matching requirements, that means like for every dollar, we would have to put in a dollar, you know, and, and even that, if, if we're planning on doing the work anyway, like the crosswalks and things, the crosswalks, we were going to do, but we got a grant for it, so matching doesn't really, in fact, that wasn't even matching, was it? Can't remember.
No, that was just...
Yeah, that was just, that was just money that they, they gave, gave us for the trail program. So we, you know, basically Andy saves us million-plus dollars every year in grants that we apply for and we get, and the only cost, the only actual physical cost to it is Andy has to do a lot of jumping through hoops and reporting, and they want to know, you know, the progress and, and how much we've spent and things like that. So he has to fill out reports, but it costs the taxpayers nothing. So it's a, it's a government at work.
Can I ask an embarrassing question?
Is it about me?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Where's John Davis Park?
Oh, it's Bunker Hill, in Freedom Hills, Bunker Hill.
Well, no wonder I didn't have, yeah, I always called it Bunker Hill. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I have nothing. Did you have anything, Kim?
No, I'd just like to thank Andrew for listing these, the meetings that you've attended over the month, month, or, I, I think it's important for us to, to be aware of those things, and I thank you for doing all that. Mayor, I don't have anything, I don't know, are we going to discuss anything in the budget and directory, or just pass it?
And just provide it.
I would like to thank Andrew for putting this in here, that the President of our council shall serve as a member ex hoc of all committees, shall receive notice of any and all meetings, and the mayor will be notified of all committee and other meetings of council and will be invited to participate. I, I appreciate that, and I think that's a, a great idea, I feel, of being close to the residents, I can have some input there. My question is, who will I get notification of committee meetings from?
Should be the chairmen of the committee.
Okay, you're, everybody's here but Andy, you hear that? Please include me in your emails so that I can participate. I have one other thing in here, EMS, and you have listed the fire chief, that's going to have to be changed. He's going to give you his information.
Yeah.
If you don't already have it.
I do.
Okay, so that way, that's very important for all of us if something comes up, you know, like burn ban seasons, and you see something, you can call fire chief, and he'll take care of it. That's, that's about all I really have. I know I got a lot of feedback and thank yous and appreciation from Juanita Street on the, on the coverage problem, and I think it's pretty well for now been settled. I think in the last month and a half, they've seen one or two, and up until the end for today, even when Herlock went out to, to double check under the warranty, they found nothing. So I know all those people on Juanita Street are very grateful to, to council, and I thank you also for being diligent with health, safety, and welfare. That's all I have.
I'd ask for a copy of the contract.
Yeah.
I'll go on to the police commission. In the directory on budget, if the Southern Regional page, it says Southern Regional Police Board, it's a commission. That can just be updated and reflects its commission. The IGA did meet on the 6th of February. Seven or eight things were pointed out, nothing major. I asked at the police commission meeting that it be sent out to the boroughs. They didn't want to do that yet. Donna wasn't able to be at the meeting that we had, she was ill. There's going to be a meeting on the 20th. I'm going to again ask for the IGA to be at the police commission, ready to hand out to boroughs. I think it's time, and it's, it's a little overdue. At the police commission meeting, a couple letters came in about the great work of our officers. There was a lady in, a Shrewsbury older lady, ill, called for help. Officer Grove went and shoveled a path so EMS could get to her, so they were very grateful for that. In New Freedom, an 80-year-old was snowed in. Officer Lawrence helped her get out. She had a doctor's appointment and couldn't make it out, so he helped getting her out and on her way so that she could get the medical care she needed. Dollar General was having some cigarette thefts, counterfeit hundred-dollar bills going in there, able to get a tag. Caught them down in Maryland, saw them in Glen Rock. State police tried to pit them, I think it was sort of a high-speed chase went on. They hit Rutter's in Shrewsbury also. They were able to catch them, and they have 27 warrants. So state has them, Maryland's going to get them, we're going to get them, so he's just going to filter on through the system there.
Pennsylvania has them first, or Southern Regional?
I believe it was in Maryland. Now, Maryland wants them, so I guess state.
Maryland caught the perpetrators, correct?
Uh, let's see, state tried to pit him, didn't work, they got away. It could be, I think that that clarified. But it said state wants them, and Maryland wants them too.
Oh, Maryland wants them too, and they caught him and catch him in Maryland, oh, they're there first. We've had that come up several times.
There was that 84-year-old man in Stewartstown. Officer Schwartz did an amazing job. He was finally found in the Philadelphia area. He had wandered into a Walmart in New Jersey, or he was pinged in the Philadelphia area. They finally found him in a Walmart in New Jersey, and he was returned home safely. There was a, an incident that went out in Shrewsbury behind, kind of like Goodwill there area. They found a man over a suitcase, intoxicated, giving false names, stolen credit cards. I actually talked to chief, and I believe more charges have come in for him. He was from the Redding area, he's now in the York jail, and he will be there for quite some time. And you'll see a pie graph, Dennis had asked for where the canine was spotted to for 23. And you'll see the darker gray area there is the, the county area. That includes York Fair, all canines have to work the York Fair, so in addition to mutual aid for others in the county, ransomless at the York Fair. And I did report to chief about Lamont's when Burnell said the door was open, they're aware of that, they want to leave. The older gentleman is getting in at night, and so if you are walking, he says, and see it, call the department, let them know that the door is ajar.
Is that the guy with the little shopping cart?
Yes.
May I back up for one second? Something else came to my mind. There's been a real major deal with post office boxes, people stealing mail out of our mailboxes along the street, plus the other major thing is keys have been stolen from the post office that hold them, all of the blue boxes. Mary, you know what I'm talking about. And they've been searching through and trying to find anything that has a, a check in it, hold it up, look, yep, that's a check, they wash it, and write it out to somebody else, change the amount. I would suggest that anybody that's doing checks, take them and drop them off at the post office for the time being. It's become a real, a real problem in all of our local communities. You can take that for what it's worth, but as for me, if it's important, I drop it off at the post office.
Great. Especially because I'm paranoid.
Yeah, well, you should be right now.
Were you done, Eric? Yes.
Okay, engineer report? Any questions? Are we going to get a chance to see their survey results for Marge Goodfell Park?
Yes.
They've been compiled, I understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll be part of the entire presentation.
Okay. Arrow Engineering?
I did the preliminary design review, meeting go on February 2nd.
I did the preliminary design review, meeting go on February 2nd.
Jay?
Oh, look, well, we met with, we met with Jimmy Dennis, one of the plans. Made some few minor corrections to, after we were at the, the site. Everything's looking good. So it's move back to them, to, to the, I guess, the electrical contractor. So that that way they can make sure that all their guts were in a row and move forward from there.
Any questions? Water system operating report.
Is that Danny's going?
Yeah.
I just, what was the, I'm just curious, what was the nature of the water leaks on McCullough in Oxford, I mean, was it a maiden break or a?
So Oxford Court, Oxford Court was a service break at the main, the saddle. Just, it's a, it's a steel saddle.
Yeah.
On a plastic pane, it rotted away. If you remember a couple years ago, twenty twenty-one, I think it was, Christmas Eve, we had one.
Yes.
The next household.
Yep.
So we're hoping that we don't have an ongoing occurrence. We won't know, you know, the time is out. The one on McCullough Avenue was the two-inch watering broke just off of the, off the curb stop on the twelve-inch main. So fortunately, it wasn't the twelve-inch.
Right.
Could still flip three homes out of water for overnight, just due to the fact that it was, it was a Sunday night. We worked for if we had the parts to fix it right down there. And we talked with the homeowners, provided them with bottled water for the evening. Like I said, they were very cooperative. We got it fixed the next day and got it back up and serviced and so that's what that was. Hopefully that fix took care of that as well. It's just, you don't know.
Yeah, right. Yeah, got it.
Would any of that affect water pressure in different areas?
Yes, for that, for that time, you know, while it was, because it.
I mean, was that a short amount of time?
It was a short amount of time, yes.
I, because I, I noticed that there were several complaints about low water pressure. I don't know what the date was.
Yeah, I was just saying, one, I was just at a house the other day and the homeowner complained about low water pressure. And when I talked to her, she, she said it was about the time that she remembered hearing the report that, you know, we had the water, the water leak and stuff like that. So the amount of water that we did lose, it wasn't catastrophic, but it definitely didn't help with pressure. But then once we got everything shut off, the levels went back up and tank began to pressure it.
And there isn't any problem with our meters? I, I'm just getting a lot of people that are complaining about their sewer and water bills as of late, that they're.
Too low?
Doubled, yeah, they're too low. Yeah, that they've like doubled. Like a water bill that's six hundred dollars, you know, when they used to pay a little more than the minimum.
Check your toilets, that's all I can tell you.
That's, that's what I tell them, that's exactly what I tell them. Because the same thing happened to me and I went in, replaced all the guts and boom, changed whole.
The meters, the meters will see drops, I mean, the new meters. Go get drops of water going through, I mean, they're right under money.
You really need to ask them to call the borough office though, because I mean, if it's, you literally, I mean, if they.
I think the one did.
Yeah, I mean, they, if they go thirty, if they go thirty days, I mean, you could have a thousand-dollar water bill easily.
Since this is reported, can we make an announcement that if your water bill is high, do your homework first and check your toilets? Because we're getting phone calls all the time about my water bill's through the roof, I don't know what's going on. First thing I ask them, did you check the toilets? Well, no, it's not leaking. It's not gonna be a visible leak around the toilet on the floor. It's internal, you need to do your homework and check that out. I don't have a problem coming out and checking that, but when you're yelling at me, telling me that, you know, I don't have a leak and I get there and two of your four toilets are constantly running, that's why your water bill and service is gonna through the roof. So please do your.
And I'll add to that suggestion. I think they, anyplace you look for homeowners that suspect, put a, drop a dye in your, in the tank. And if you see, see blue in the toilet bowl, you got a leak.
You can obviously read your own water bill if you know, get right, look at the, read it on the meter, daily.
Yep. It's usually the flapper that warps pretty quickly, right?
And I put in different types of, type of flapper and it just, it seals tight.
All your flappers anyway if you haven't already changed them.
So if people didn't hear that, please, if you have a problem with your water bill going up, call the, call the borough office, we can check it.
We can add that to the news ladder too. Just put a little.
It's been.
Order and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it will wait for a while.
To comment on yours, we have, we, it's, ours is plastic. What, would you recommend, a rubber or metal? Because a plastic is often just really not built enough. I have to change.
Plastic, the, the flat?
Yes.
The flat?
Uh, no, no, no. The flushy part where you.
I was, you're just talking about the ball.
Yes.
The flush, what's the word that sets the flush valve? Either one.
The, the. The plastic doesn't hold up that.
I put the plastic one itself.
The plastic one doesn't hold up.
Actually, if you get the, the flush valves that have the, it's like a round, it looks like a little burr. If you get that plate, it works better than the arm ones do. And you probably have one or would probably.
So I wanted to.
And you can put those flush valves in, they're gonna change them.
Yeah.
And you can go to a depot and get them, I think it's called Flushmaster.
Yeah, thank you.
Flapper valves like ten bucks and a water bill can be a thousand, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollars.
Like I said, I have a house of six, so.
Yeah.
I'm like.
Yeah, imagine your water bill's up anyway, so.
Oh, between laundry, washing dishes, because I don't have a dishwasher, I am the dishwasher. So, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions on water? So waste water treatment plant report.
I, I have a question. Maybe, maybe you just know without talking to John at a treatment. He's, he's had the sodium hypochlorite for the phylmenis, but you know how long he's had the phylmenis? Usually that's, there's a reason for that.
Yeah, it's, it's just been added recently. And it's actually only going into two of the three tanks. And it's just to control that, a little bit of the cardiac phylmenis issue is because of increasing DO, increasing dissolved. So it's getting out of control, but it's just recent.
Aeration, increased dissolved also.
That's, yeah, it's increasing aeration and getting higher phosphorus react phases.
Anything else? So any code enforcement?
I just kinda skipped over building permits. I did wanna mention that the borough office got a very nice email from one of the citizens who was applying for permits. And they actually specifically mentioned Brenda by name that helped her get permits and make sure everything was up to snuff so that they could get the permits that they needed.
How's that coming along for having something come back for pools?
Since you bring it up, if you, if you look at pool companies and you talk to pool companies, there's no real requirement to cover a pool in the winter time. They recommend it because of debris and stuff that can get in. But even, even putting a cover on, normally the cover is permeable and it allows water in and out. So as far as mosquitoes go, there's normally a, a bit of water on top, on top of the cover. So.
Pump it up.
I'm sorry?
That's why you pump it up when we're having such warm weather.
Oh, I don't think, you don't have to worry about mosquitoes in fifty, sixty-degree weather.
No, I'm just saying that there's no requirement by the manufacturer that pools be covered.
Are we into code enforcement?
We are.
Okay. Well, why can't we do something? I, I get a lot of emails about two thirty-five there.
Looks like things are being, the last two address what has previously happened in.
Yeah, they're into five different, different quality of citations.
Yeah.
You know, when do we say, this is enough and go to the magistrate?
Agreed to a payment plan.
Payment plan of what, to pay their fines?
That's how I took it.
That doesn't mean that they're gonna fix it.
The, the very last one says that the occupant, occupant has completely filled one-site dumpster three times to date.
Go past it.
I have. It's, I'd say it's worse, but if, if they're getting dumpsters.
That's my point. It doesn't look like, I have seen new dumpster and I'll bring up another.
I have seen, if I remember correctly, it's a big red one.
Okay, I don't go past there every day, but I've had some inquiries from, from residents. And I have another question about that property. Do we allow someone, and I don't know if they are, but do we allow someone to live in an RV on a borough, on borough property?
On borough property?
Well, it's, but it's private property, but it's in the borough. Shrewsbury I know had a big problem, you remember? And they had to, I think, what was it, a maximum of three days? They allowed people to live in an RV on a borough, you know, on a lot. Is there somebody living in that is what I'm basically asking? And is there any ordinance? Not asking you to answer me now, I just, if you can look it up.
Yeah.
Check one, please.
If you're living there, it'd be another dwelling unit which would not be permitted on the property.
Well, that's what I thought.
Did the.
I mean, are we going to go into stricter enforcement on this property? It's been going on since August.
Do they have a schedule on dumpsters, are they getting one a month or weekly?
That's what I see, yes.
They are weekly.
Just said three times to date, but.
And every other month they're bringing in new junk, I think. It's just.
I mean, that's a, that's a vicious cycle if this person has a boarding mentality or patients.
Yeah, there's not a word to it with. Imagine what the inside must look like.
Clean, it's all in front yard.
You think, you would think.
That documentation, these dumpsters are lacking?
That's something that we can ask.
That's a point, it's being filled and empty weekly, yes.
They're working towards it, I guess. You know, there are junk haulers out there, they could hire somebody to do it. And it wouldn't have taken from August till February. Sometimes I just think we need to be a little more aggressive with these things.
Well, I mean, if you look back in November, there was the issue with the resident and there's, there's health issues with that individual that they were misplaced.
I think, I mean, there are organizations, if we have people that are in dire need and it's not just a junk situation. We have the Lions Club, the Boy Scouts, several other community organizations that I'm betting you, if you, all you had to do was ask and they would help.
That should be the homeowner, that shouldn't be the council reaching out to them. There is no way I'd suggest anybody go into.
We're here to help the residents of the borough. And if that helps, we can ask them if, you know, they're willing to help people. That's what we're here for, to help the residents. Next step is just to see what they do with the dumpsters and.
If, if the concern is that they're not making best enough progress, then we have to see how issuing citations for non-keeping of the tickets and continuance of the violation.
So they're up to how much in fines at this point? Every one increases, correct?
Yeah, the last one was five hundred dollars.
So they've got a four hundred, a three hundred, a two and a one before that, right?
No, it's.
I forget how they, every, first, second, third?
Third is a hundred, fourth and everyone after is five hundred. First one's twenty-five, I think it's twenty-five fifty, one hundred, five hundred.
Are you in touch with them?
Yes.
Is it improper to ask them if an organization, if they could use some help from an organization?
No, I don't think so.
Then let me know. If they, if you talk to them again, say, do you guys really need some help? I'll see if I can organize a Saturday or something where the, the Lions and the, and the Boy Scouts will come in and along with myself, as much as I can do with a bad back. And I'm sure we can get some volunteers, at least I'm sure I can. Okay? We'll try to help them out.
I'd rather see that than thousands of dollars of fines, it doesn't really help anybody.
Right. Thousands of dollars of fines that they're not gonna be able to pay.
You know, they have the order mentality, compare on that, whatever the, usually something will start it off. You know, it's hard to deal with that, trying to get them to, to want to.
It's hor, it's horrible, it's, it's, it's a disease. I could tell you stories when I was a funeral director of. I said I could, I didn't say I will. Subdivision of land development activity report. Was that always thirty-seven or was it thirty-four and they just changed?
That's thirty-seven.
Okay.
I think it's the half hour, half hour, half acre requirements, correct?
What's this? I'm sorry, was it Gretchen?
Crystal.
Gret, I'm sorry?
Crystal.
Crystal? I have hearing aids, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, this is the development we were talking about, the thirty-seven lots over, over by Kerschner that they're gonna be on half acre lots.
And this is the one that's on, this is the one that's gonna be on the opposite side of Campbell.
Freedom Hills. Freedom Hills. It'll come right off of Freedom Hills. It'll be off Constitution.
Nothing's going up like Campbell.
By the Leonberg.
It'll be Leonberg Company. It's out there at Constitution. Yeah, this is the one.
Thank you. I need landmarks. I'm sorry.
You're like me, yeah.
Landmarks.
They'll shape or form and turn and laugh.
I'm like, I don't know roads. I need landmarks. So these are going to be the single-family homes. These aren't going to be the multiple...
Right, that's true.
Where we're packed in, like Franklin Square, Zachary.
That is correct. That was turned down.
Possibly on the other side of the street, because that's Shrewsbury Township, so we'll have to wait and see.
Oh, I did see that. That had, that new sign that just magically just shot up out of nowhere. Like, oh, okay.
No, you're talking about off of Wendy Hill, going out Wendy Hill.
There's one there too. There's like two.
Yeah, all over.
Is that signing the township?
Yeah, the township, when you're on Campbell, when you're going out to the light.
No, wait, Campbell?
Campbell. When you're coming up around the bend here, just after, just a little after the first, that new, that new development where it is, like, I think before that main street, there is a sign that says, "Welcome to Shrewsbury Township."
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Right, yeah. They just, I think they just put this up.
Because it's a little weird. It's, and this is what I had found when I moved here, where just recently, that New Freedom is like a horseshoe, and it's not just one, you know, you have, like, we have a friend that has a New Freedom address, but their kids went to Redline School Districts.
Yeah, there's, there's not, you have to be careful, because the post office and New Freedom Borough are actually two different things. If your mail comes out of New Freedom Post Office, you have a New Freedom address. So like even Strawberry Fields is a New Freedom address, but it's not part of New Freedom. A lot of people don't realize that. I mean, you can go up all the way to Hain Town, by the Amish markets.
Yes.
That's New Freedom.
Yeah.
But it's not New Freedom. It's just a New Freedom Post Office.
17349.
Oh, okay.
New Freedom is only two square miles.
Right.
Oh.
If you go to Google, type in New Freedom Borough or 17349, and it'll give you a map of the difference.
So there's a difference between New Freedom and then New Freedom Borough?
No. There's a difference between New Freedom Post Office and where they deliver and New Freedom Borough. New Freedom Borough is a political subdivision that sits in, kind of like in, it used to be part of, I believe it used to be part of actually Shrewsbury Township, and then it was divided off and incorporated as a town. But then the post office delivers to a much broader area, way outside of New Freedom. They don't vote for people in New Freedom. They don't, they don't, they're not part of New Freedom.
So the mailing is different as far as how you get your mail, but as far as zoning and district you are, that's where that is?
You could have a New Freedom address and be governed by a different municipality.
Oh, here's a good, here's a good example for you. Those houses that you see on the other side of the Shrewsbury Township sign?
Yes.
They have a 17349 zip code.
Okay.
Their mail comes out of our post office, but we have nothing whatsoever to do with them, other than their sewage comes to our sewage treatment plant. But they're not part of New Freedom Borough.
The land is Shrewsbury Township.
A lot of them thought they were when they owned those houses.
And I think that's where the, I think honestly, and I think, and that where it comes, you have a New Freedom address, so you automatically think that you're going to be in New Freedom. Because when I'm looking at something, like if I'm, you know, eventually within the next 10 years, I want to buy a house in New Freedom. So I have to look at the actual New Freedom municipality as opposed to...
Yep, that's the best thing you can do.
But you see where it's kind of, so why hasn't that changed?
It never will. It never will. It was an agreement with the post office and Shrewsbury and the township, that we would be the mail carrier and they would deliver houses over in Shrewsbury Borough. Anything outside of Shrewsbury Borough, it used to be Rural Roots, you guys remember that? RD2, RD3, you know, but it was still listed under 17349. Relaxing philosophical.
Go ahead.
Any other questions on subdivision land development? Recreation?
All right. I was unable to, I was unable to attend the last meeting. Erica attended in my absence, so thank you for that. There was, I think, some misunderstanding at the meeting. Mary Ann texted Andrew during the meeting. Andrew provided the clarification, so thank you for that. The question that was in concern was related to the rec director. Rec director then reports to the commission. The commission, I believe, thought it was the other way around. That was clarified.
Reports to the board. There's a board, not a commission, correct?
Commission. Am I using that incorrectly?
Commission, either one.
Commission. I apologize. They want to talk about the parade, Fourth of July for next year. That'll be held on 7/6/2024. Just ask that all advertisement savvy citizen website and the Quarterly Mailer have that included. Nothing new on the farmer's market. They're gonna wait for the rec director. Tennis, the tennis program has started on February 4th and will continue for six weeks until approximately March 10th. Did have a question on here. They had, at the very bottom of the rec, they had a, made a motion to reimburse Mary Ann for the tennis ball supply. Is there, would there be any benefit to get something like that through Co-Stars? Not really worth it? Such a small item?
Small, yeah.
All right. I know it's, it's not that frequent, so I didn't know if there'd be any real benefit to doing that or not.
Kind of a picky little point of order. Sorry, but Mary Ann Michaels probably shouldn't be seconding the motion to reimburse herself. She has to recuse herself.
Oh, yeah. Wasn't anybody there.
And then you have to wait. That's it. See, the solicitor leaves early and these questions come up. That's just a fact.
Yeah, I mean, I...
And I'm sure it was because they were just short people on the other end.
Yeah. I think just in general, it might be better than just to avoid this, so they can get the supplies they need. If they don't have members at the meeting, maybe just have them purchase through the Borough, but I will definitely, I'll take that as a follow-up and talk to her about that. Rec was informed that starting, I believe, where are we at? Is it March? My rec will be mandatory for all events. There was some comments about the ongoing issues with the floor.
As declininess or...
It's just, I guess, dust on the floor and general cleanliness, yeah. I know we talked about it last month, the indoor golf program. They're in the process of finding dates to start this program, so there'll be some more information come for that. And I believe we talked about this before. Veterans Day, the dinner will be on 11/7/24 at the community center. They've already started making reservations, DJ amongst other things. And then we talked about it earlier tonight, but the park feasibility study meeting, there'll be some more information coming from that. Just another important note, that items that were discussed on there are potential items for the park. Just because it was on there doesn't mean that it's 100% going into the park, or the study is to determine what features would be beneficial to the community. Anybody have any questions?
I think that needs to be brought up when they have a meeting, that they must have a quorum. I've gone through it a couple of times with them. There are five member...
They have three members.
Board, but they only have two members there. It's happened a couple of times. I think we need to remind them that get ahold of somebody either on the phone. Really, you're supposed to have a quorum even before the other person is on the phone. Am I correct, Andy? Andrew?
I don't, you don't have a quorum before you're saying you have a first...
We have to have a quorum before you can have somebody.
Person on the phone make the call, or no?
No, no.
Yeah, I don't think, but in this case, quorum is the number of seated individuals.
Well, if there's a five-member, three would be a quorum.
Three seated members.
Right.
Two.
Wait a minute, you have a, it's a five-member...
Two are vacant. There's only three.
Well, that's, it's still a five-member.
I guess, but they're seated.
Because I had it changed from seven to five because they had problems finding somebody. I don't want to see them or us end up getting in trouble down the line if somebody complains. Because they really should have three present and then somebody else can phone in.
They only have three members.
That's their problem. They should be going out and trying to get, what if we had three members, you know, or not a quorum here, and we just said, "Oh, well, we've only got three"? No, we've got to appoint other people for their seats. They fall under the same thing.
Do they fall under the same rules under the state where the Borough is required to do full council member's seat within 30 days?
Yes, because they're appointed by us.
Do they fall under the same rules?
I, I think that they do.
All right, well, it's, they have three members, two members is a quorum, and I will take that as a follow-up to Mary Ann.
Then we need to change, we need to change the ordinance or...
With everything that's coming to rec, I'm not sure that we really need to go through all that, because it's gonna change in its entirety soon anyway, with the joint Shrewsbury Township and New Freedom Borough.
And how much an ethics violation costs?
I do not.
$1,000 a person, personally.
Okay. Andrew, would you mind following up with the solicitor to find out, even though they're a five-member, potentially a five-member board, that they have three seated members, what the rules are?
You can, but we already, we've already been there. That's why we changed it to five, because they had four, so three would make up a quorum. We did this two years ago, a year and a half ago.
Thank you. That's all. Anybody else have any other questions?
No. I do want to point out again that rec donated $2,500 from the veterans to 712. I think Jack sent a letter, the commander sent a letter out to recreation.
I didn't cover that last meeting. I apologize.
You may have. I just couldn't remember. It was in the minutes. I just, I didn't say thanks to you. Committees, if we... Are there any, I'll just do it in total, are there any committee reports in specifically rental housing and occupancy? Have you guys not yet?
No. I think we're waiting for something from the solicitor, and then we will meet.
What are you waiting for from the solicitor? Just, I mean, just out of curiosity? Suggestions on some, a couple of points. Okay. Health and safety, fire EMS, the annual Rose Fire, what do you call it? You and I were both there. It was a EMS banquet.
EMS fire banquet.
Fire and EMS banquet to recognize people who have put in significant periods of service. They have five 10-year awards. The mayor and I both spoke, and Denny Cummings was there, attended. They announced that Chief Woods was going to be the chief, and the deputy chief is going to be Tim Kemp. These guys are, these guys are doing one heck of a job. They really are, yeah.
Yep.
And one thing that came up at the EMS meeting, or at the fire company, fire EMS banquet, was the volunteers that they have, which are considered social members, they have, they put in a lot of time on the beef sales, the fundraising, the things that have to be done. Other municipalities award the people with four, four points towards qualification on the tax credit for every hour that they put in, I believe, and we do two. And they were asking, off the record, I mean, it was just, I think they're gonna come back and ask formally, but we may want to consider increasing it to four to match Shrewsbury Borough and Railroad and the other municipalities. It's real tough to, like, I'm a member, you know, and I do my part up there, but it's real tough for us auxiliary members to... I don't think anyone would qualify. I mean, I'm not even sure you would get another tax qualification from that. It would just be showing that we appreciate it. So that'll come up later. I just wanted to mention it now because it came up at the banquet.
That matrix was done by resolution, so it's a simple resolution.
Yeah, yeah, so. In fact, you know, am I out of line just adding it to next month? Because I'm sure they're gonna send something over about it. Do you want to add that resolution on for next month or not?
Yeah, I think you probably want to add the current resolution so that everyone has a chance to...
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. Look at the current resolution and with the intent of possibly modifying it and put that on next month's agenda. Okay. Any additional public comment? Anyone else have anything to go to the order? There was something in last month's meeting that said we were going to, was it the sign regulation? Or we were gonna, supposed to look at this month?
Well, that's only if it came back favorably from your county planning commission.
Oh, okay. I remember there was something that we put on to discuss at today's meeting.
They already covered that.
I would entertain a motion. All in favor of your journey?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.